councillor Low. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. I'm saying.
Just a point, James. I volunteered on the basis that I've got a background that suits the vacancy. I don't need a job description for it. I think there was one applicant for St George's Barracks. I think in terms of trustees and the Royal Institute, again, we don't really know very much about it. And I think everybody would want to know about that in the future. So to understand what all the roles are, I would certainly bring something back for the military.
These are only for a year anyway. So they'll all come back next year.
I think they've gone back before.
With respect, chairman, I also have a lot of military connections and would have had a strong interest in going to the military memorations. But as you expressed an interest, councillor, and background, and we were agreeing that we would vote on this one, I thought rather than wait for the information to come back, if you really wanted to do it, you could do it. And I feel that's the same with St George's Barracks and the Royal Institute.
I've got seven, four.
Seven or four against, because I'm staying in. Or who didn't vote?
Who voted? Who voted against? First quarter, it must be eight, four then.
Okay. The, what I'm going to say here is that I presume everybody got their papers in advance of this evening. And you have the opportunity to ask some of these questions and find out before you came here this evening. With all due respect, if you're going to go to this council meeting ill-prepared, that lad rest with the couch around the table, chairman. And I'm going to write that off clear now. Because if we go through the remainder of the year, where people are not going to do their homework when they come to this organisation. Whereas I applaud and welcome you as all the tiers, I hope you take it more seriously, well at least you do your research before you come to me.
Mr Chair, I respond, my man. Councillor, I agree with your comments. Therefore, we'd like the full set of notes beforehand. And all the documents that we've told tonight will be made available in the future. They should be available in the pack in order to not thought. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'll take your point, you have to take your point. I mean, this is how it's done. I think the way forward, if we. If I may make suggestions of a way forward. When the clerk has got, because we've got time, just if we're going to bring some of these back. When the clerk has got time to fit it in, to do a pack for everybody, for everybody of what all these organisations do. And when they meet, so that everybody can have a pack.
I think so. I'd be delighted to read in, but my point is, it isn't about the clerk this. This is about the whole way the council operates. If we don't have documents available, that's not the clerk's fault. That's the council that's accountable for that. So documents should exist, they shouldn't be made up on the night, and we should apologise to people that they don't exist.
Yeah, I agree with you. As I say, the way, to me, the way forward, I think, is to acknowledge that the news shop's coming and let's move forward and get that sorted. And I hope the clerk probably has quite a few of them back by the time we bring this back. So do you want to defer the rest, or do you want to? Oh, sorry.
Do you give a second of the council name?
Oh.
Then defer the rest?
Councillor, do you say seconding councillor Ainsley is deferment of the rest?
We have a list of the rest.
Yes.
I am losing track.
Yeah.
It's not because I'm ill-prepared.
The list, I fish it.
Well, no, that would be.
Well, the trouble is, when you do it, when you do it like this, you lose track of which ones we have. So my list is, the ones we have deferred are trustees of Victoria Hall, Open United Charities, Brooklyn Access Group, Parish Forums Working Party, and the Partnership Board, which?
And C A B.
No, the C A B is the chairman.
No, that's not being stated here.
Okay, well, that's okay, so we'll bring that one back as well. So here you've got C A B, trustees of Victoria Hall, Open United Charities, Parish Working Party, Brooklyn Access Group, and the Partnership Board.
Is there a requirement for representatives on the partnership board? There are only our simple expression of interest.
Yeah, but it's on my list, and I'm just deferring what's on my list. I can do no more, I can do no less. If I didn't defer that one, someone would say, well, why would you defer the last one? Councillor Woodley?
Yeah, so the references to where people have said there is a standing person typically such as Brooklyn Together and councillor Lowes has said that's on Citizens Advice. Where would that be? In what form of document that obviously would be public?
That would be on last year's minutes of the A G M.
Okay, so if I read that now, I can confirm that that's normally.
Origin where, yes. Because that's what we voted on last year. Some of these work, Phil, like all the places on the committee's, right? Councillor Walters?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have to make this go on much longer, we need to move on. We've got to have clarification of the number of vacancies for the trustees of the Victoria Hall. It's written here as one, but I heard it was more, but someone's already on it, but we haven't voted them on it tonight, so where are we?
Well, that one's going to be deferred, the clerk will find out just exactly how many they do actually want. So I have a motion for deferment of Citizens Advice, trustees of Victoria Hall, United Charities, Brooklyn Access Group, Parish Forum Working Party, and the Partnership Board, we're just scrubbing out anyway. That has been proposed and seconded, all those in favour? And the clerk will give as much information as possible for the next.
You have a change.
Okay, thank you very much. Item thirteen is the schedule of meetings. And just to make members aware, minute two oh two eighteen, which refers to the time of the meetings, has now expired and the meetings have now reverted back to seven o'clock. Unless somebody wants to propose something different. So I have, you have the schedule of meetings. Anybody got any comments, or do I have a proposal to accept?
Is there? We, I, it was my suggestion originally about changing the time to start at half past six, especially during the winter months. I'd like to propose that I continue, to be honest, I think that half past six is a better start, especially if meetings are going to go on at some month.
A second, that's.
Okay. The proposal's seconded that the meetings continue to start at half past six.
Sorry, I suppose you carry on.
Well, that's a negative, so. Yeah, we can, there's a, you've got one proposal on the table that's been seconded, so you have to go with that. Unless you want to make an amendment to that proposal, but that is a, that's a very negative intention. So we have a proposal seconded that the meetings stay at half past six. All those in favour of half past six? Six, all those against? Must be six.
Six or six.
I have a question, so for the next six months, we'll do, I hope it stays as it is. And we'll have a look at the game in six months' time.
So, Mr Chair, I think the councillor mentioned it was about winter, we're in the summer.
And we were.
So if we go to advantage of half past six in the winter, this is the summer.
Yeah, well, she didn't specify, she just said half past six, and that was voted on, so.
When was that decision made, and have you brought it back in six months?
The decision was made in, the decision was made in October. That was when that was moved, because I checked, because I thought it might, I didn't want it forwarded within six months' time, so I did check my papers this morning.
So we stay, so we give that six thirty?
Six thirty. Right. We need a nominee. We need a proposal to accept the dates of the meetings. That's councillor Wobbsworth, seconded by, that's all known. All those in favour of the schedule of meetings? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Right, item fourteen is bank signatories, coordinating just the following accounts, the council's current account, the mayor's charity, Cambridge Film Society, and Melton Building Society. At present time, on the current account is myself and councillor Low. And we need another one, anybody want councillor Woodley? Councillor?
I'll second.
Yes, sorry.
As far as the mayor's charity account goes, that cannot be the chairman. If possible, if councillor Low and Romney would stay on the account, and then with the additional people, it's just, it, there's a lot, a lot of work involved with taking signatures off, adding them back on, and sometimes it can hold back doing things through the back account, so if you're okay with that, and then the additional people, that would be good.
I'm just happy with that, so current account.
So I need an extra one for currently.
Sorry, Mr Chair, you've got six new councillors here tonight. And there's quite a few things going through with the older council members. So at the moment, you've just made a decision there that the two signatories that were previously offered potentially remain.
Still need to vote.
They still need to vote. That's just my.
So I'd like to propose those signatories change, at least one can change it, please.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem. So who are you voting for?
I'll propose Mr Woodley.
You don't second over councillor Woodley, after councillor Bookstern. Any other nominations?
So, what's track here, are we talking about the current account?
The current account, yes, I need three councillors.
And you've got at the moment.
At the moment, we have myself and councillor Low of current signatories.
And Woodley, she's been professed, that makes it a doctorate.
The third, yes.
We have to vote, we need to vote on the other two.
Are we voting on taking one of them off, both of them off?
Well, at the moment, I have only one further nomination, and there's three, three people on the list, and then three seats.
Chair, I nominate myself.
Councillor Walters? Okay. Well, I.
We still need to vote for.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw myself from there. So the signatories nominations are councillor Low, councillor Woodley, and councillor Walters.
We still need to vote for councillor Low.
Yes, so. Do you want to do it on block?
I need a second of.
I need a second of councillor Low, I'll second. Councillor Woodley, I think was seconded by councillor Rizell. And councillor Walters, I need a second of for him, councillor Ainsley. Right, so we've got councillor Low, councillor Woodley, councillor Walters, been proposed and seconded, all those in favour, please show. Actually, unanimous, thank you. Mayor's charity, must not be anywhere on, the manager's councillor Low, and Walter Black. Councillor Woodley, in order to, so I'm the second of councillor Woodley, please, councillor Rizell. Any other nominations? Councillor Walters? Councillor Walters?
Yeah, I'll vote too.
A proposer? Second of, yeah, I have three, so you have to vote.
Come on, we've got Nick Woodley.
First of all, it's councillor Low. So councillor Woodley was seconded by councillor Club. Councillor Walters was seconded by councillor Rizell. Do you want to have a show of hands, or do you want to do a sign of that? We've got three, we've got, we're supposed to show hands.
We can have three.
We can have three?
Does that, sign, clue, the clerk, is my question.
Yes, the clerks are automatically.
Okay. Chairman, what we're doing is we're voting to add people on to it. Unless I offer to stand down, the council are going to have to vote for me to come off it.
Yes.
And I'm not going to offer to stand down as the signatory.
No.
I've been under the council long enough, I realise it, the councillors don't hang around that long. And all it does is cost the council money and time in getting other signatories to then step forward.
So what we have now, we're going to have a vote for councillor Low, councillor Woodley, and councillor Walters. So we'll take them in order, all those in favour of councillor Low, please show.
Is it one vote each, or?
You can vote, you can vote any time you want.
What time's it on?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Those in favour of councillor Woodley, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine. Councillor Walters, please show.
Seconded.
Okay, seconded. Councillor Rizell. Sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So the signatories are councillor Woodley, councillor Walters. And councillor Low, I'm sorry, I should, point of order. I have not been voted, what, all we've done is the councillors voted, we've got three signatories. That's what we've done. We've not voted for somebody to come off it. We're not going to sign ballot, so that rule doesn't apply on us. So if we'd have done a signed ballot, it would have been different, but this isn't. We've not done it by first across the line here. So at the moment, we voted for Low, Woodley, and Walters. What I said at the beginning of this was that if you don't want me on it, I'm not offering to stand down, the council have to vote me off it. In other words, you have to make a proposal, one of you gentlemen and ladies has to make a proposal, I'm not a signatory on that count, it needs seconded it, and then you need the majority, because that's how we're doing this. We're not doing a signed ballot on this one. Councillor Woodley?
I propose that if I don't know comes off, sorry.
Councillor Low?
Can you correct myself? Councillor Low comes off.
Now I second that councillor Low comes off.
All those in favour of, that please show. Six. Those against?
Six.
It's going to come in here on.
It's a signed ballot, is it?
If I've already voted for councillor Low, why should I vote for councillor Low to stay on? Chair?
Well, you can have, we can have, we can have more, we can have more, if everybody's happy, we can have more.
So.
So councillor Low remains.
So councillor Low, councillor Woodley, councillor Walters are signatories for the mayor's charity. Do you reckon, you're going to like? Get away, right, one cheque.
And what I will say is, Cambridge Build Society, we have to, we do have to vote if people are to be taken off, because they need that minute in, I need to send that as evidence.
And this is one where we need photo ID and all that, yes. So Cambridge Build Society, notice account, for this, it's quite complicated, because you have to take, you have to go in, take your ID, your passport, and photo, and blah, and just to get your own money. So at the moment, it is myself and councillor Low, and we need one more signatory unless somebody wants to nominate us that we come off. Councillor Woodley?
I'd vote for myself on.
You'd make yourself on, yeah. I'll second councillor Woodley.
I propose councillor Neil.
We have one more, more votes. Councillor Neil. So I'll second councillor Neil. Councillor Woodley.
I'll second councillor Neil. I'll shoot that, somebody else ready?
Yeah, I think I do, but yeah, but I'll take councillor Rizell, that's not a problem.
Zoe, councillor Zoe Neil.
So if everybody's happy, the sign. So the signatories would be councillor Low, myself, and then councillor Woodley and councillor Neil. Anybody else want to put their name forward? Everybody happy with that, the vote all, do you want it on block, or? On block, all those in favour? For the four.
Never play.
Thank you. Melton Building Society is myself, and we need two others. Councillor Woodley? Thank you. I'll second councillor Woodley.
Propose councillor Neil, Chair.
Councillor Neil.
I'm that, stand for.
I'll second of the councillor Neil, please. Do you want it, councillor Buck? And the second of councillor Rizell is councillor Bookstern.
Three, so we did on block if it's happy.
So that will be. So the signatories will be myself, councillor Woodley, councillor Neil, and councillor Rizell. Everybody happy, all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous, thank you. For the new signatories, the clerk will give all the forms and let you know the procedure. Item sixteen, the dependent G, which you have, we were all sent by email, to decide whether they are to approve the statement of accounts. Who wants to kick this one up? Councillor?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to support the statement of accounts.
Okay.
And I, am I able to make a proposal?
Usually, yes, yes.
I'd like to propose that we defer acceptance until the finance working group has had a chance to take a look. They came quite late, and then once they've had a look, that the ladies' finance working group are brought back to council with their findings at the next meeting, which was on, was in June nineteen hundred, that's okay.
Mr Chair, I'll make a second.
Sorry, eighteen thirty.
We just want to double check that we don't have to do it today. Because this is, we do normally do it.
Sure, I understand that.
When we get to the finance, the, we are going to need to nominate somebody to reconcile the banks, we still come in and go through all that anyway.
Mr Chair, this question, please. Councillor, on topic, of the public.
Yes, sir.
So if I may say so, it would show, if it showed face to the public, if at this first meeting, we can agree that new councillors can have a look, have an opportunity.
Yes, no, no, we weren't, we're only just checking, making sure that by law, we don't have to do them tonight, which we don't, so, yes, I mean, we have a defer, a motion to defer.
Can I just say, normally councillors do have them in their pack, three days' notice. Unfortunately, we had to do the year end, and our financial package does that for us, and they only did it for me on Friday, and I don't have to do that next year. So that's why, unfortunately, we only got them this week.
This is my attempt as to a quick decision.
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't, I wasn't taking as that, I'm just explaining to new members the reason.
It's just, it's just purely bad timing, really, year end and the new year.
But they are on our website now.
So it's been moved and seconded that we defer to the finance committee, or do you want to bring them back to the next committee, the next meeting, when you've got more chance to have a review?
My proposal was that we defer to the finance working group, and that we then, when they've had a chance to review, they come back to us at the next council meeting, that's really the essence of my proposal. I think so, I think that's my proposal, so we have to vote on it, yes.
So we proposed and seconded by councillor Low. All those in favour of deferment to the finance working group? Five, six, seven. All those against? Staining? Six. So that's the first of the finance working group.
Surely.
I have to ask a question on finances.
No, no, it's been third. Sixteen, general power of competence, paper, paper. Chair?
I've been given that the council has exercised general power of competence for the last four years. There is a, gives a brief outline of it. Given that there are twelve councillors now that were all elected, albeit someone opposed, but they're still classed as elected, and that we have now got quite a plaque. Before we go into detailed discussions, I would propose that the council exercises right to use a general power of competence. By means of that following resolution, a stake on paper, so I propose that we accept general power of competence.
Councillor Woodley?
I'll second that.
Anyone else want to make any comment?
I'll just have to go ahead, the clerk.
Do we do that, please?
Yes. So all those in favour of acceptance? Unanimous, thank you very much. Seventeen, tree wardens, appoint a parish tree warden for Open. Councillor Bookstern?
Yeah, I'm going to propose that Joyce continues in this role for this year anyway. She's a lot of experience, and she doesn't have to be a member of the council, so I would, to be a point.
I would second that, Chair.
So my, to, to, yes, question, yes.
And I have no objection to Joyce carrying on, but what I would ask is, what was put forward last year was that somebody worked with Joyce so that there was a gathering of experience. That didn't work out, but I think if it's going to carry on, then somebody should put forward to start that, because there's come a point where she either can't or doesn't want to do it anymore. And we don't want to be left with nobody understanding what she's actually doing and who she's reporting to, so I might have to take that into consideration.
Deformingly well, I think, I think largely worth as well seeing if anybody else is actually interested in becoming a tree warden. And see if the clerk could find if there's any courses that would be available for members to go on, if members have got that sort of interest in becoming it. For those new members, I mean, everybody knows Mrs Lucas, she has been the tree warden for many years, she's very knowledgeable, and councillor Bookstern was correct that the tree warden doesn't have to be a member of this authority. And needs to be nominated by, we would actually expect her to report back to the council on a regular basis. So that's where we're looking, well, councillor Woodley?
If we're looking, sorry, I should stand. I, for me, I think as this is no longer looking at an eternal member of the council. I actually think it's a good idea, we'll be getting laypeople, but I don't think we should just pick the only person we know. I think we should open it up to the public, if that's what we're doing, and offer to other people who may be interested, not just pick the one person we know. As if that's our decision to appoint a layperson. So I would suggest, if that's what we, the course we would like to take, and I'm going to propose that we would actually put an advert in the local press and on our notice boards, inviting people to that, to forward for that position, so it's a fair and democratic representation, rather than just picking the person we know. No offence to Joyce, she's done a fantastic job, and if that's what happens, and you know, that's the best person, I think it's just not the right thing for this person.
What sort of timescale are you thinking of?
I would, I would suggest that we would need at least four weeks from getting an advert in the paper, and I'm not sure how long, how quickly the clerk can do that.
So.
It could be a press release, it doesn't have to be an advertisement.
I, I, yeah, I was just.
At the moment, councillor Woodley, he's putting a proposal, and he's filling out his proposal at the moment.
Yeah, or, well, I, I don't know how effective the press will be.
Yes, you're right, yes, sorry, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but first of all.
I'm amending that, because it's introducing a layperson.
You're making that an amendment, it's okay, so we'll take the amendment first. I'm just, I'm just thinking of where, what that leaves us with tree problems in the interim.
Same as we were.
We can, sorry, Chair, I would say, we can, we can, we can always go to the county council and ask for a call from them. Yeah. If councillor Bookstern is happy to take the amendment that we gave for the advert, because I seconded it, I would go on with what councillor Bookstern wants to do as well.
Yes, and so she doesn't need to be a member of the council, any new people coming, you don't need to be a member of the council. So I'd be quite happy to, yeah, I think she has a few people in mind, but because it's not a sort of job you can, you can gain experience with those who are not.
I agree. So we have a proposal, let Jean just say a few words, then we're going to move on to the vote.
If we're going to go down the road of proposing to a layperson, does that mean we're employing them?
No.
Does that mean that we're paying them expenses? And what are we going to expect from them? You know, it's, it's more than just putting an advert.
There is, there is no salary, there is no expenses, there is no finance for it at all in the budget.
So what commitment would they have to offer, and what reports would they have to do, and what the times now, and what have been done? Yeah, it's.
I think we need, I think we need, can I ask councillor Woodley, if what's, what's the clerk has got, can we defer this, if members are happy with, shall we defer this? Councillor, if you would bring the paper to the clerk so that she can then produce a payment for, councillor?
Can I just raise, I think that paper needs to include, if we're opening this out twenty-one, how are we recruiting them, are we doing interviews? out twenty-one, how are we recruiting them, are we doing interviews, who's going to do an interview, what experience have people got, how many of us are we recruiting, if we get three people come in?
That's the point. If we open it up to layups, none of these decisions.
I think this is the point, isn't it, at the moment we've got somebody who's been doing it for lots of years and very well by the sound of it, but.
As a member of the council, that's the thing as well, yes.
For transparency and to grow somebody new, I'm sure that person will have a job description, they'll have experience, they'll have documents, they'll have understanding, that could all be put on paper and then you can offer it out to the community as a volunteer, that's the point, as a volunteer to support the council.
So the proposal is then from myself, if it's seconded, that we defer this, does that defer councillor Woodley? All those in favour of deferment? Was everybody, councillor Ainsley, are you abstaining?
Yes.
Eleven? All those in favour, sorry, all those in favour? All those against? Abstaining?
Can I, sorry, Chair, I'm not standing because I'll fall over. Can I just add that Jean's original point as well, that I think a member of the council also needs to be appointed to work closely with the tree.
That will come in in the paper, so what we have at the moment then is we could defer this, councillor Woodley's going to produce a paper, bring it back to council, like I have that, and hopefully we might, depending on what's on the agenda, we might get it on next month and then we can have a good flash of it and see where we're going from there. Everybody happy?
Has Joyce been re-elected for next year or?
No, no, we've been re-elected. Okay, everybody happy with that? All right, item eighteen is Oakham Town Project Board, appendix I, I have a letter we'll just keep your time. The date is wrong as well, by the way, because as Jean quite rightly pointed out to me, it's not that close to Christmas. The date should be twenty eighteen, not twenty nineteen.
On the first line. We haven't reached nineteen.
Do you see?
We haven't reached it. Very true.
Okay, so. So really, what we're agreeing in, are we agreeing in principle to the project board and would we defer that in writing, which I think we are anyway, aren't we? Councillor Woodley?
I propose we accept the formation of the board as proposed and that we would be more than willing to put a member on if not more, if given the opportunity, bearing in mind how close to our hearts it is.
Exactly. Secondly, if I can, councillor Clark, all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous, thank you. Item nineteen, the LARA LLC twenty nineteen annual general meeting, appendix J. I mean, I'm happy to nominate myself to go, if there'll be others to go.
Sorry, Chair, my logic on this was based on the fact I thought we had to nominate members to be on the LARA LC as our representatives and it's just tweaked in my mind, but I didn't see that on the list of organisations.
Originally, they did ask for them, but then they decided that they didn't want that, but then we received this letter to a member to attend the ATM.
Okay, sorry.
That's why.
So we have, I've nominated myself, I need a second of councillor.
Absolutely seconded.
Oh, thank you. And we have a nomination for councillor Clark, do I have a second there? Councillor Rizell, so all, all those in favour of myself, please show. Only one voting there.
Only one going.
Yeah, other people can go, but only one, so we're voting for who can.
Yes, so we'll both go, we'll both go. All those in favour of myself, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Against, all those in favour of, oh, abstaining, sorry.
Apologies, I thought it was either or.
No, we can send two, we can send two members, only one member can vote.
And we decide who's going to get the vote then?
That's what we're doing.
Thank you.
So who does the voting, would you like to do it tonight?
I think so, yeah.
We're voting for either myself or councillor Clark, who can vote at the eighth meeting. All those in favour of myself, please show. That's ten. Against, abstaining. Do you have a second, I'm voting.
I'm voting for councillor Clark.
All right, all those in favour of councillor Clark? So I, councillors are all going, I'll give it to them. Right, item twenty, exempt item to decide whether to exclude the present public from section one of the Public Bodies and Division of Meetings Act nineteen sixty, as amended during the Constitution of the House. Item twenty-one on the agenda as a, as it contains confidential and contractual matters. I move, I need a second, second of councillor Woodley, all those in favour of exclusion, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance this evening.